Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, April 15, 2011. Hope everybody's taken care of their taxes by now, or gotten that extension. And we are here in council chambers, Room 340, City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. This is a day in which Californians can get thanks from the rest of the country for donating our taxes disproportionately to other states. But that aside, we are here to conduct city business, and we have some great presentations before us. We do have a quorum already, so Mr. Clerk, if you call the roll, we will go ahead and start the meeting, and then we'll go to our presentations. And I want to thank members of the public who are here today, joining with us to be a part of this City Council meeting. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Caress, Krikorian, Laban, Schparks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zang, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Alarcon moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds, without objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Ms. Han moves, and Ms. Perry seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well. Colleagues, why don't we run through the agenda before our presentations here, if we can direct your attention towards any items that you'd like to call special today? First items, please.
Mr. President, items one through four are items for which public hearings have been held. Item one is an ordinance. Would you like to hold it on the desk until twelve members are present?
Yes, let's hold item one on the desk, till we have twelve. That leaves us two, three, and four. Anybody wishing to call two, three, or four special? And we do have any cards on the public, from the public on those?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings on those. Any specials, two, three, and four? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items five through twelve are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
There's no objection to consideration. Those are now before us. Items five through twelve, do we have any special items? Mr. Laban, are you calling twelve special? All right, Mr. Laban just calls twelve special. Any other specials, five through eleven? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next items, on the continuation agenda, please.
On the continuation agenda, items thirteen through fifteen are items noticed for public hearing. Items thirteen and fourteen are PCN applications in Council District Nine. Findings and recommendations are required for item thirteen.
Okay. We have a motion required in your district, Ms. Perry, on item number thirteen, Ms. Perry. Did you want to make a motion? It requires a motion for the public convenience of necessity?
Yes.
Okay, so move to approve. And there's no motion needed on this, on the, on fourteen, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas?
On fifteen, special for Caress.
All righty. Call fifteen, special. We'll take up thirteen and fourteen. Please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that is approved. We'll go to Mr. Alarcon, our Chair of our Jobs Committee, for our first presentation for our great four-star award winners through our city's WIA system. Mr. Alarcon, and thank you to everybody who is here helping Angelinos get back to work.
We actually have, the first five rows here, I think, are the honorees, so why don't you join me up here? Just squeeze in. As Chair of the Jobs and Business Development Committee, I am very proud to honor the One Source and WorkSource Centers that have attained the four-star award. A four-star award is given to a center that has attained a four-star rating, the highest rating in their yearly evaluation, in categories including customer satisfaction, performance outcomes, customer flow, and administrative capability. As you all know, we transitioned our social service providing network into One Source Centers, and in doing so, we have really created new efficiencies in our system. It's been tough to cut back on the grants that we historically have provided, but through collaborations, through a new design, in terms of those collaborations, as well as the One Source Centers, we are actually able to provide more services that were not previously being provided. So all of the One Source Centers and WorkSource Centers in Los Angeles do a great job in assisting the residents of our city, helping businesses expand, finding residents' jobs, and linking people to assistance programs. But those that received this award have gone above and beyond. Seventeen centers have received a four-star evaluation this year, all of which have representation here today. So here today, with us are representatives of the Workforce Investment Board, and I'm happy to introduce Greg Irish, the Executive Director of the Workforce Investment Board, for his comments.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. As you can tell, we travel in a crowd, right? I'm also joined by, and I want to acknowledge Richard Benbow, your partner. You want to come up here? Richard deserves a great deal of credit for how well we operate workforce investment programs in the city of L.A. We have the reputation of being the most innovative operator of workforce development programs in the country. And I'm joined, of course, by the Chair, Charlie Wu. We do the best in terms of serving almost 165,000 folks who are looking for jobs. As you know, our unemployment rate is significantly higher than it was a number of years ago before the recession. It's currently at over 13 percent, so over 250,000 people are out of work right now. And these guys are on the front lines of actually helping people find job training and finding replacement employment. A WorkSource Center is an adult employment center. A One Source Center is a youth employment center, and these guys represent the best of the best, and they're being acknowledged for that today. Thank you.
I want to thank Greg Irish, the Executive Director of the Workforce Investment Board. He dates back to CD7.
You and I, and Tom Bradley's office.
Wow. He worked, I forgot that one, but we worked together in Mayor Tom Bradley's office, but I recall, I believe even before that, you worked for CD7.
Howard Finn.
Howard Finn, yes. So glad to see you're still employed. I mean, excuse me. Now, the chairperson and the real power behind the Workforce Investment Board, good friend of all of ours, very active in our community, particularly in Chinatown, and just a great person, Charlie Wu.
It's really a great pleasure for me, as Chair of the Workforce Investment Board for the city of Los Angeles, to present to you our outstanding WorkSource Centers and One Source Centers. As a business owner, as an employer, you know, we know how tough things are, and it's really gratifying to know that, as things get tough, the good ones rose to the occasion. And I think the Workforce Investment Board has been really strategic and smart in investing in the workforce of Los Angeles, in the future industries, and as Greg mentioned, we assist over 170,000 job seekers in the last year, and over 15,000 youth to have their job experience, plus 1,400 businesses that need good-skill workforce. So it's really a pleasure to see our effort, our investment, coming to fruition through this eight WorkSource Centers and the nine One Source Centers. Really, it's a wonderful day to see community groups rise to the occasion and serve the citizens of Los Angeles. It's a pleasure to be part of this celebration this morning. Thank you.
Charlie really is amazing. He has been Chair of the Workforce Investment Board, dating back to Mayor Bradley, and we thank him greatly. We know he has a business to run, and yet he is always contributing to the community, and we're grateful for that. I'm proud to honor the four-star award-winning WorkSource Center and One Source Centers for their important efforts, and wish them continued success for many years to come, as they help us deal with the critical needs of the people of Los Angeles. So I'm going to present these one at a time, and try to get through them very quickly. South Los Angeles, you know what? I have a list, I'm sorry. I want to give credit to the council districts. South Los Angeles One Source Youth Opportunity Center. Thank you. South Los Angeles One Source, wait, is this the same thing?
That's a different one. You get two.
Oh, this one is, they're both in CD15, but this one is the Watts Labor Community Action Committee. Marissa, help me hand them out. Okay, this is another one? Okay, this one is, I hope I get these right, Marissa. South Los Angeles One Source Youth Opportunity Center, represented by the Archdiocesan Youth Employment Services of Catholic Charities of Los Angeles. That's Council District Eight. Central Los Angeles One Source Youth Opportunity Center, this is the Regents of the University of California, CD1. She says UCLA. Mr. Smith? Oh, he's not here. The Central Los Angeles One Source Youth Opportunity Center, this one is, oh, the Archdiocesan Youth Employment Services of Catholic Charities, again. And that was CD13. The East Los Angeles One Source Youth Opportunity Center is represented by the Youth Opportunity Movement in Borlites, CD14. The South Valley One Source Youth Opportunity Center is represented by El Proyecto de Barrio, representing CD3. I think I skipped one. So this one is the East Los Angeles One Source Youth Opportunity Center, represented by Now, at the North Valley One Source Youth Opportunity Center, again represented by El Proyecto de Barrio, in CD6. This is the Southeast Los Angeles Crenshaw WorkSource Center, represented by the United Auto Workers Labor Employment and Training Corporation, in CD9. This is the Westlake WorkSource Center, Pacific Asian Consortium in Employment Pace, in CD1. Now Marina Del Rey, Mar Vista WorkSource Center, represented by the Jewish Vocational Services, Now we move on to the Housing Authority WorkSource Portal, Housing Authority of the City of Metro North Los Angeles WorkSource Center, represented by Goodwill Industries of Southern The Wilshire Metro WorkSource Center, represented by the Community Career Development, Inc., in CD10. And Harbor WorkSource Center, represented by Pacific Gateway Workforce Investment Network, And the final award goes to the Northeast Los Angeles WorkSource Center, the operators ResCare Workforce Services, in CD1. I think the councilmembers, we know and have personal relationships with these organizations that work in our districts, I would invite each of you to say something, but we're going to be going to the back to take pictures, and I would ask the councilmembers representing these particular agencies to please join us. These organizations have gone through some trying times, given the cutbacks, given the economic crisis. Many organizations that they represent, beyond those that were introduced, are doing a great job of holding our social services together, and we want to thank them. We also want to extend thanks to CDD. The evaluation piece was critical in our policy considerations of this. We wanted to make sure that as we go through the transition, we did it as effectively and efficiently as possible. And I have to say that even though none of the service providers in my area received the four-star award, they're doing a great job, so I don't know, these people must be doing an amazing job. So I want to thank all the participants.
Thank you. We have a few councilmembers who want to add their good wishes as well. Just before that, I wanted to return to our general public comment. Do we have any cards on our general public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir, we do not. We'll close that. We'll come back to this item. Ms. Han, if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you. Well, it's a great day to celebrate these stars in the workforce investment world. I just wanted to obviously congratulate Richard Benbow, our great General Manager, and Charlie Wu, a great leader, businessman, and Chair of the Workforce Investment Board. And as you said, these are very tough times in our region, with people trying to enter the workforce for the first time, but many people trying to enter the workforce for the second and third time. And the services provided by these One Source Centers in terms of training, retraining, job opportunities, helping folks understand where, how their resumes may need to change. The work you're providing is absolutely critical right now, and it's a great example of really partnership with the federal government and others to really look at this. And I think things are looking better, but we know, you know, even our veterans that are coming home, many of them are finding themselves in a terrible situation. Women veterans, for instance, have the highest unemployment rate. And so the workforce centers are exactly what we need to continue to focus on and fund, so that we can get people retrained. And I wanted to especially congratulate the ones in my district, the Watts, WLCAC, the YoWatts, the Harbor Area Workforce Center, and even our very own Housing Authority, who, again, have seen the importance of the partnership between, you know, what we're doing and making sure that people have access to a place where they can enter the workforce. Our economy is never going to recover until people get jobs, and that's what we have to focus on, and that's what you're focusing on. So congratulations to those of you, even in tough times, with budget shortfalls, you've been able to rise above this, remember what your mission is, and focus on people re-entering the workforce. Congratulations, we're so proud of you today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han, and if I can add my voice to the chorus, thank you, Mr. Alarcon, for doing this. This used to be my favorite thing to do when I was Chair of our HCD Committee, and so many of the groups that you honored, we've seen time and time again. Mr. Wu, thank you for your incredible leadership, and Mr. Irish, and Mr. Benbow, Mr. Seines, everybody who's part of this team has really done, I think, the best in class in this nation at a time when we see federal government, both sides, saying not if, but how much to cut. It seems completely crazy, we'd be cutting anything out of our Workforce Investment Act dollars right at the moment when we need it the most. So thank you for doing what you are doing to get Angelinos back to work, to train people who are underemployed for good-paying jobs. It helps us all lift up the economy, and lift up all of us individually, so congratulations on that. And with that, I'll return it to Mr. Alarcon for any closing words.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Weston is reminding me to recognize Mr. Michael Dawson.
Absolutely.
His participation in the web as well. Thank you so much. I wanted to, I just want to close by saying that in honor of these recognitions, today I'm introducing a resolution to make April Workforce Development Month in Los Angeles, recognizing the challenges we have ahead. And just a side note, political note, we got to do something to save the youth development budget for the summer youth employment program. We can't let that fall down.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. With that, we'll move to Council District 10 for two presentations, but let's vote on the ordinance while he is approaching the podium. Whoa, Mr. Zine, whoa. Okay, let's go ahead on item number one, and please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. As Mr. Weston goes to the podium for our next presentation, Mr. Zine, do you want to make a quick introduction?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very welcome.
We have some students, as soon as the seats clear, we have the fourth and fifth graders, 21 students from St. Catharina's Siena School in Reseda, that are here with Sister Sheila McNiff, and we'll get them on camera. If we can get the students to get them on camera to show their moms and dads they're not cutting school, they're in City Council today. As the students take the seats in the chambers, as Mr. Weston prepares, if we can get the camera on the students. Students, if you'll wave, you'll be on television. There you go, you're on television, Sister Sheila McNiff, St. Catharina's Siena School, fourth and fifth graders, a tour of City Hall, showing their L.A. City Government in action. Thank you, Sister, for bringing the students down. Thank you. That's a Catholic school sister, I know you have her well under control, because Tom Laban went to Catholic school, and we know what happened with him. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
I believe Mr. Parks and Mr. Zine went to Catholic school as well. With that, Mr. Weston, for our next presentation.
That worked out great. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. President, and members. Before I identify these great people behind me, I want to take you on a quick trip down memory lane. I know Ms. Perry probably will remember some of this. When we were kids, you wake up, and you might hear somebody outside hollering "fresh fish", or "watermelon". We ate healthy, for the most part. You know, I can't remember a lunch or a dinner where there wasn't a couple of vegetables. Always fruit for lunch, dinner, sometimes for breakfast. We ate a lot of oatmeal. And it didn't seem like obesity was a problem. Now, I don't have data to back that up, but I only remember two guys that would be considered obese that I grew up with. You see, that was then. This is now. You have, for us, eating at a fast-food place like Bob's Big Boy or Kentucky Fried Chicken, that was a treat. You did it maybe once every 10 days. Now, we have a lot of children where that's what they eat every day. They don't get fresh fruit. They don't get vegetables. And I know this to be a fact, because every year I take a bunch of children on a three-day camping trip. And what's amazing, even though they don't get this, they like it, because we have fruit plentiful, salads every day, and you should see those young people dig in to those fruits and those vegetables. And it's also kind of sad, because a lot of the kids that we take to camp, they don't even know how to use a knife or a fork, so we have to teach them to do that. That's wrong. We have high diabetes, high obesity, kids that spend literally no time exercising. The people standing behind me are a group that came together that said enough is enough. And they worked hard to do several things, one of which is to make sure people understand about nutrition. Another thing, to make sure people understand the importance of exercise. Another thing is to make sure that in market deserts, that there is fresh fruit and vegetables. They also realize, when you have fresh produce, it creates an atmosphere for decent-paying jobs. So I want to commend the members of the Alliance for Healthy and Responsible Grocery Stores for all of the work that they've done through the years to create partnerships with the grocery store industry, to educate the people that need educating, and to try to bring quality jobs to districts like the one that I represent. So I am so proud and pleased to honor them. It's a little late, I think National Nutrition Month was last month, but basically, I wanted to bring forth these people today. A group of community activists got together, and this is one of their agendas. I'd like to identify the individuals that participate in the Alliance for Healthy and Responsible Grocery Stores. We have Scope Agenda, LANE, the Progressive Jewish Alliance, the American Diabetes Association, the American Heart Association, and the Alliance for Californias for Community Empowerment. If anything is going to make our young people and old people healthier, it's to eat properly and to exercise. With that said, I'd like to ask all of you to give this group of folk behind me a rousing round of applause. I want to ask Lynn Motley to come forward. Oh, you're to my, right, okay. So you look up on the television screen, it's reversed. I should be used to that by now. But anyway, I'd like to present you with this resolution from the city of Los Angeles, signed by every member of this great council. Ms. Motley, would you please say a few words?
I would like to thank Councilmember Weston for... I would like to thank Councilmember Westen for introducing Grocery Responsibility Ordinance, as well as the other council members. My name is Lynn Motley, and I am a proud member of ACE, and yes, I also live in Watts. So ACE has joined with Lain to bring about the changes, and we're proud to be a part of that. I constantly struggle with the low quality of produce, meat and products in my community. In a small non-union stores in South Los Angeles, this problem causes me to travel across the city to get basic nutritional needs met. I would love to one day be able to wake up and walk to a local store and get the nutritional items that I need. Thank you.
Now, I'm just going to ask, because I don't have a list, if you could just come up, say your name and the organization.
Sure. My name is Eric Green, I'm the Southern California Director of Progressive Jewish Alliance. It's great to be with you today, and I just want to thank so many members of the council, Councilmember Westen, and Councilmember Carruthers and Garcetti, and so many that have done so much on this issue, because it's important that the basic decent requirements for a good life be available to everyone, no matter income, no matter race, no matter neighborhood. That's what the Progressive Jewish Alliance has committed to, and we're so happy to join with the Coalition for Responsible Grocery Stores to make sure that that dream becomes reality for everyone. So my thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Eric, and you are very articulate, but I will state again, state your name and organization, and that's it.
Well said. Manuel Hernandez, with Strategic Concepts and Organizing and Policy Education, also known as Agenda, and thank you very much for all the hard work that everyone has done.
Karenina Brianas from LA Alliance for a New Economy. Victoria Browder from LA Alliance for a New Economy.
I know your dad well.
Aya Nguyen, also from the LA Alliance for a New Economy. Thank you.
Luis Pocaleti from Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy.
Mr. President, members, thank you very much. Oh, did I miss anybody? No, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Westen. Unless your four-legged visitor has arrived, we will go to Mr. Cartoness at this point and get back to you for the final presentation.
Our next presentation is a celebration of 60 years of business and contributions to the City of Los Angeles, and more specifically, to the San Fernando Valley and beyond. Standing with me is Shirley Wolfson, John Wolfson. John is also not only a businessperson, but a council member in Calabasas. And Patty Jo Wolfson is also the Chairwoman of the Board of New Directions for Youth. We're celebrating Sinmark Company. They, it was founded in 1951 by a father and son, Frank Winner and Samuel Wolfson, and their first purchase of land was in Van Nuys. Frank saw that Van Nuys was the middle of the valley, and knew it would be a good place to develop industrial land and buildings. Over the next 60 years, Sinmark Company expanded and became an industrial land realty company, owning industrial buildings in the San Fernando Valley, Northridge, Chatsworth, and Oxnard, employing hundreds of people in the manufacturing arena. And this past February marked the 60th anniversary of the company, and was celebrated, and the grand opening of their newest facility in Van Nuys drew over 200 guests, and people celebrated and talked about all the wonderful years of experience that this great family has brought to the San Fernando Valley. True to the vision embodied by its founders, Sinmark Company remains a true family-owned business. It is now being run by the grandsons of Frank Winner, the sons of Samuel Wolfson, and management is comprised of Mark Wolfson, Kim Wolfson, and Jonathan Wolfson. Their entrepreneurship and vision seen in the Wolfson family helped create the industrial manufacturing base which we now know in the San Fernando Valley. It is with great honor and commitment that this family has given themselves to the community. But one of the things that I'd like to remind ourselves, that not every business, not every entrepreneurship can last 10, 15, 20, 30, or even 60 years. But I think it's a true testament that they have proven that to be a true businessperson is someone who not only cares about the product that they make, but they care about the people that they employ. And on top of that, they also go further and realize that they are part of the community, and they give to the community. And for that, I think this family and this business has been rewarded with 60 years of success. So with that, I'd like to ask them to say a few words. Shirley, are you ready? Okay, your turn.
I'm not prepared to be a speaker, but I do appreciate this honor and this recognition. I feel my heart is pumping very fast at the moment, and I thank all of you very much.
John.
I just want to thank Councilmember Cartoness for this honor and the rest of the council. And we are, we're very proud that we have been a part of the fabric of the City of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley for the past 60 years. And once again, I want to thank you for the honor. Thank you.
Patty's shy today. Patty, talk a little bit about the community involvement that your family's been involved in, and also, maybe you could talk a little bit about your, being the Chairwoman of New Directions for Youth, please.
Well, I'm very honored to have such great role models. My father, Sam Wolfson, and my grandfather were very generous in the community, and I have learned from them. And because of that, I am honored to be the Chairman of the Board of New Directions for Youth. We've been serving the greater Los Angeles area for 35 years with at-risk, for at-risk and foster kids. And thank you very much today for this honor, appreciate Council.
Thank you.
Cartoness for calling us up today and honoring us in this way. Thank you.
And also, just to remind you, being the Chairwoman of a not-for-profit board means it's non-paid. So once again, giving back to the community in many, many ways for 60 years. Congratulations.
Mr., why don't we go with item 12 on the agenda, and I believe that Mr. LaBange has a presentation on item 12 with Mr. Parks and a very special family. Mr. LaBange, you want to go next?
Yeah, Mr. Parks is coming up there with you.
And let's welcome this very special family.
This is Jackie Robinson Day, not just in Los Angeles, but throughout the United States and Major League Baseball. This, I'm joined by Councilmember Parks and members of the Robinson family. I want to move this over here, Bernard, so you can go right like this. So we have everybody right here. Super. Mr. Reyes, please. Please welcome Mr. Reyes to Councilman at Dodger Stadium. Today, on this day, we celebrate what is the 10th Annual Jackie Robinson Day. And you know, this, this particular spot here is where a fellow named Duke Russell would come here and talk, as he has, about the needs for young people, but years ago, he talked about Jackie Robinson. And he talked about Jackie Robinson and how we should be recognized in a way with the Los Angeles Dodgers. And that then formed the Dodgers, which always has an eye on celebrating their great athletes, and Jackie being the greatest for what he did. But that also spread out nationally, that today, throughout the country, at Major League Ballparks, they're recognizing Jackie Robinson. He was born in Georgia, came west to Pasadena, was a bulldog at Pasadena High, and a great athlete. Was a great athlete at Pasadena City College, and got a scholarship to UCLA, which is one of the great universities in the country. At UCLA, he was both a great football star and baseball star. His brother Mac was a great athlete as well, an Olympian in the 36 Games in Berlin. Together, the Robinson brothers were fabulous athletes, students. But baseball was his passion, and baseball was the game that he played and succeeded. And then Branch Rickey selected him to come from the Montreal AAA team to pull him up to the majors to break the color line. We don't really realize that, as, in today's society, as much has changed from that. But Jackie Robinson was absolutely an unbelievable barrier breaker in this incident. And of other times back here, in this council chambers, when we were here, we were joined by Don Newcombe, who is also a Dodger, and played with Jackie, and he told the story of Roy Campanella and Jackie Robinson and himself meeting with Dr. Martin Luther King. And Dr. King said to those athletes, those Dodgers, what a tough job they had in trying to break the color line that was there and transform America. As we all know, Dr. King had the greatest of all role, but he praised Jackie Robinson, Roy Campanella, and Don Newcombe. So we didn't want this day to pass, we wanted to salute everyone and recognize the greatness of Jackie Robinson, that we tell people the story of Jackie Robinson on and on and repeat. And I love the Jackie Robinson story, it's an old black and white film, it's on TBS from time to time, young man playing ball, not getting a chance, gets a chance, and makes the best of that chance. So I'm going to ask Mr. Parks to say a few words, and Mr. Reyes, and then I want to have the family say a few words as well, and introduce our fellow recipients.
Thank you very much, Tom. I just wanted to add my voice to Mr. Jackie Robinson's legacy. In fact, today, at 11:30, he's being honored along with members of the foundation over at Prenshaw High School, and so we'll be going there to continue this day. I don't think he could have had a greater tribute than the National Baseball League having the ability to retire his number for every team. And I think that's the epitome of their view of honoring him. And having personally been able to go to Vero Beach a couple of years ago, and have Maury Wills give us a tour of the Dodger Spring Training Camp, and actually show us the stands where it was segregated, and show us the places where the ballplayers could and could not go, it makes it even more remarkable as to what Jackie Robinson's achievements were, not just in the country and the impact on baseball, but in his own organization, how the fans were segregated and how they didn't allow people to have full access to the stadium. And so, we're just pleased to be able to continue this honor and to make sure that people realize it was a, not just breaking the color line for baseball, it was a major impact on human rights in this entire country. And so I think that's what we remember him for, and the fact that he was a person, the first one, and you have to realize that the first one went to the Hall of Fame. And so how many people that may not have had his skills did not get the opportunity because of a variety of things. And so we're just pleased to be here and thank Tom for keeping his memory alive.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, colleagues. You look at the 10th Annual, 10 years ago, we started as council members, and Tom was advocating for this day, and I said, great, let's make it happen. Now, when I look at this annual event, and we look at what this really means, we have this issue with our venues, and the tragedy that occurred in Dodger Stadium. But if you look at today's support system, the cutbacks in our recreation programs, the cutbacks in our schools, the loss of teachers, the loss of recreation programs, our art programs in our schools, Jackie Robinson is a reflection of what happens when you do have the support system. Coming out of a tough neighborhood in Pasadena, being able to excel at UCLA, which happens to be my alma mater, Bernard, it's great to hear you say that. But to me, it invokes this sense of gratitude, and how we can have such a great role model, that we need to celebrate this accomplishment, more importantly, send that message, that we need to invest in our youth, that we look at these cutbacks, that it has a dire consequence to the future of our children, and that we need to change the dialogue in the public discussion in Washington DC and Sacramento, here in Los Angeles, our school districts, that we need to invest in our youth, because we need more Jackie Robinsons. So I thank you for this moment, I thank you for allowing me to share these thoughts, and more importantly, to celebrate such a great man in the history of this great country. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Give Mr. Reyes a big hand for all the work he does for the Dodgers, which is so special. Kathy Robinson, you're going to speak on behalf of the family granddaughter.
Jackie's niece.
Jackie's niece.
Hello, it's again a wonderful pleasure to be here in council chambers. We want to just thank everyone here for their support in the projects that go on with the Robinson family, along with the foundation, founded in 1973 by my Aunt Rachel Robinson. I came with my daughters Sachi and Brittany, and my new grandbaby Makara, to continue the tradition that we keep the family going, the family in view and sight. We're here in Los Angeles, in Pasadena. My mom sends her regards, Delano Robinson, and from New York, my Aunt Rachel also says her greetings as well. My daughter Brittany, she just wanted to make a little statement on her computer, I don't know if it'll be voice activated, but we'll try. No?
Got it right there, good, this is good. Hold that right there.
But what it says is, my name is Brittany, Mac was my grandpa, the Robinsons were good athletes from Pasadena. Thank you.
Good job, good job.
Thank you so much, and we'll, let's have a good day today.
Great, thank you very much, Kathy. Say hi to your mom, and say hi also to your aunt, and how special that is. The foundation lives on. Representing the Jackie Robinson Foundation is Kai Phillips, who's going to introduce, a very, very special recipient of the Jackie Robinson Scholarship Foundation. Kai Phillips.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody on behalf of the board members and the Jackie Robinson Foundation for recognizing Jackie Robinson and the City of Los Angeles. We know that this is the perfect backdrop, and that is why we chose to have an office, satellite office here, in conjunction with our headquarters back in New York. So thank you for welcoming us and helping us continue the legacy of Jackie Robinson, our namesake. And I'm actually going to introduce two of our recipients, one is an esteemed alumni, Daniela Jones, and another is a current UCLA senior, Karen Horton.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Daniela Jones, and I'm an alumni, and we just really appreciate the honor, and thank you to the entire council.
And I'm Karen Horton, I'm currently a senior at UCLA, and also want to say thanks, this is really important to all of us.
Mr. LaBange, before you go on, we have Mr. Garcetti, who wants to say a few words.
Thank you very much, and I just wanted to thank the family and all the supporters and Mr. LaBange for doing this every year, it's an amazing tradition, an amazing part of LA history. I was talking to our Director of Recreation and Parks, our general manager, the other day, and he was telling me a little bit about the history and the rules of Major League Baseball. And of course, we know the story that almost all the owners and general managers were saying, no, we do not want this to happen. But it was Happy Chandler who invoked something that exists where the commissioner can overrule, for the good of the game, a majority vote. It's a moment when you have this special power to be able to say, look, we know this is usually a democracy among the owners, but if there's something, where someone is being denied something, or something for the good of the game, and I can think of no better good for the game than this act had. And when we think through that history, and we think through, Mr. Reyes, the great work that you're doing to make sure the Dodgers are back to what we know them to be, and a safe place for families to be, it's that good of the game that Jackie always embodied. So thank you to the family, thank you for those ideals, and we have to keep re-teaching that story over and over each year to those who would either take it for granted or forget, because when you read history and it's just a page you flip, it seems so easy, but in the midst of the struggle, we know just how hard it is. Congratulations and thank you.
Madam President, as we present this resolution signed by all members, we want to salute all of us, but especially the Robinson family, which we're so proud of, Pasadena, California, UCLA, all the way. Jackie Robinson, 10th anniversary, here we go. Here we go. We're going to take a picture of that.
All right.
And as we continue to go back, before we move, I just want to say what's so important about this public stand right here is public comment. And this man here, constituent on Lucerne Boulevard in Los Angeles, filled out a card and said, "I got an idea," over 10 years ago. And that idea is for this day, which now is a national day, started here in Los Angeles. So I want to salute Duke Russell.
Thank you. And don't go away, we have more speakers, Mr. Kerkorian, Ms. Han, and Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Kerkorian.
I just want to tap the opportunity certainly to the family and all the friends of Jackie Robinson. I'm glad we do this every year. I am glad we remember Jackie Robinson every day, because sometimes you think, "Oh gee, we do it every year, do we have to do it every year?" I'm glad we do, because it is always the right day to talk about Jackie Robinson and to talk about not only the barriers he broke, but the human being that he was. And he was just such a great guy, and the impact that he had on so many lives, even today, is a role model worth looking up to. He's a man that continues to inspire way beyond the Dodger fans, just generations of young people who can look to Jackie Robinson as a man who had obstacles, who had barriers, who had a lot going against him, but really focused on what he had going for him. And what he had going for him was this incredible, indomitable spirit that just knew that right was right, and he had the courage and the bravery to really continue to talk about the equality, the equality and justice for all. And a great man, great family. Thank you for letting us celebrate him once a year. We ought to be doing it every day. I know Tom Labonge says it every day, 44, 42, but thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Labonge, floor is yours.
And thank you, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Reyes for bringing us together again to commemorate Jackie Robinson's great contribution to this city, to this country, to the world. It's entirely fitting that we do it, because Jackie Robinson is, in my view, the greatest of all Dodgers. And as a Dodger fan, as all of us are, I think we should commemorate him for that reason alone. But there's another reason too, and that's his important role in world history, really, because there were many players in the Negro Leagues that Branch Rickey or any other owner could have brought, or any other general manager could have brought up to the Major Leagues at that time that could have competed at the Major League level, obviously. But Branch Rickey selected Jackie Robinson not just because he was the best, not just because he was an aggressive competitor, not just because he knew that he would exceed all expectations at the Major League level, but also because he was of unquestionable character and was the sort of person who could be a standard bearer for the cause of desegregation. And he knew that Jackie Robinson, no matter what abuse he would be subjected to, and he was subjected to a great deal of abuse and horrible racism and bigotry as the Dodgers traveled around the country, but no matter what he was faced with, he always did it with dignity, he played with aggressive competitiveness, but never fought back and responded in a way that would be able to be used against him and against the greater cause of desegregation. So he was not only a pioneer, but really a role model, I think, for other people who would come after him in breaking through other barriers as well of all sorts. I'm the first Armenian-American ever to be elected to the city council. I keep a poster of Jackie Robinson in my office, so that every single day when I and my staff walk in, we remember his legacy, remember those lessons of, you know, what it means to be the first and what it means to have that responsibility of bringing others with you. So I couldn't be prouder to stand here in support of this recognition and stand here with the family of Jackie Robinson, a man who's meant so much to all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon.
Yes, I said this in previous years, but when I was 10 years old, we took a family trip to San Francisco during the summer, and there was a civil rights demonstration. And leading the march was Jackie Robinson. And having played baseball till I was 27 years old, in fact, the only reason I stopped playing baseball was because Mayor Bradley appointed me at that age. And so as much as I loved baseball, I never forgot that Jackie Robinson found something more important than baseball itself, and that was civil rights. And I'll never forget him up giving a speech, and I was only 10 years old, didn't really understand all the dynamics of it, but I never forgot it. And I think when I gave up baseball in high school to work and also to become a student activist, I think there was a little bit of Jackie Robinson there, because I made that commitment, because I thought I was doing something more important than playing a game. In Jackie Robinson's case, it wasn't just a game. It was a cultural shift in our society, and he spearheaded it, and we should all be grateful to him and to the family for the tremendous legacy that you have continued in his memory. Thank you so much, and we'll always celebrate Jackie Robinson in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon, and Mr. Duke Russell to close.
Jackie Robinson is an American hero. He risked his life every day and night while he was playing with the Dodgers. And I want to thank former Mayor Han for allowing this yearly presentation. It's just, I hope now that it becomes a state holiday in California, so all the children in our schools, colleges, and universities learn what he did and how he brought millions of people together in this nation. Thank you.
And Duke, I just want to say, instead of a state holiday, a state education day, so we get the education down, because we'll make sure, because I think that would help, because we can't give them any more holidays as we have going on. Let's hear it for Jackie Robinson Day in the city of Los Angeles. We're going to go back and take pictures. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. And I believe Mr. Rosendahl would like to make an announcement, and while Mr. Rosendahl is doing that, we need to vote on number 12. So open the roll on 12, close the roll, tabulate the vote, congratulations. Congratulations to the Robinson family. Mr. Parks?
Number 11.
I'm sorry?
Fourth with on number 11.
Fourth with on number 11. Well, Mr. Rosendahl, why don't you make your announcement while Mr. Weston is making his way to the podium.
Thank you very much, Madam President. There's two things I'd like to say, colleagues. First of all, I'd like to introduce the Constitutional Rights Foundation that is here in the room with young people from a whole lot of area schools, and they're learning government right by, sitting in here and seeing how it operates. And if they could stand up and wave so the cameras can see them, I'd be most happy to see that happen. And while they're there, I do have a Rule 23, young madam, that I would like to introduce at this point, if we could do that.
Can I add something?
Yes, please, Mr. Labonge.
To add to the young people here, big shout out for Fremont High School, big shout out for Bell High School, big shout out for Manual Arts, and the biggest shout out for John Marshall High.
Mr. Rosendahl. For the others that weren't mentioned, give them a shout out.
Mr. Rosendahl, you haven't circulated your Rule 23 yet. Can you do that?
Yes.
Is it being circulated right now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because the members don't have it yet. All right, let's hold, can we hold just for?
Until the, sure, the dog thing, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Mr. Weston, we'll go back to presentations.
Thank you. And Mr. Rosendahl, I want to thank you for letting Herbie do his dog thing, okay? Anyway, today we had a first. Bruce was stuck in traffic, so I meant to fold Bruce into the presentation that I did earlier today. But this is Pet Adoption, Dog Adoption Friday, and Bruce here is a one-and-a-half-year-old terrier. He's got his shots, everything microchipped, he's ready to go. I want to thank the president, who generally tries to put me up early when we have, you know, people that are here, because it makes it easier. So since we don't have the crowd that we had earlier, I've got to urge the employees that are listening or watching this on television to come down. We're going to have Joe stay with Bruce, and hopefully somebody will come down and adopt him. If not, for those of you that are watching this on Channel 35, please call 888-452-7381. Remember, we are in a very fierce competition with the county of Los Angeles. We have a 100% adoption rate, and I do not want us to lose to Supervisor Mike Antonovich. So somebody, please, come on and adopt Bruce. Yeah, Coretts is like me, we, our wives will not even allow us to put a dog in our car. So somebody else has to come rescue him, save his life. He's a great little pet, and Joe, thank you for bringing him down. Thank you, members and those in the building, please come down to the back of the chambers. Bruce and Joe will be there, and let's find this puppy a home. Thank you.
Mr. Coretts, why don't we go to 15 very quickly? I think you have something you'd like to say.
Yes, I'd just like to continue item 15 to May 6.
Okay, thank you. That'll be without objection. What's our next item, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, the Rule 23 has now been circulated. If you'd like to take that for consideration.
Right, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you for circulating it. Colleagues, there's a very serious situation, and I appreciate the opportunity to list the findings, and I know Dion will also maybe discuss it, but let me just say this and tell me if it makes sense. Since the posting of today's agenda, it has come to our attention that a gentleman by the name of Joseph Sikaguejo, the last name is Bakomibi, which of course I have trouble pronouncing, is a gay man from Uganda, is currently in custody in San Diego for an expired visa. U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement is actively processing his deportation back to Uganda. Urgent and immediate action is required to urge Congress to grant an extension of his visa and possibly permanent residency. Counsel must first, of course, make its findings in Government Code 54954.2 before considering this substantive resolution. He put his thumbs up, Dion did, so.
For the record, I was prepared to state the findings also, so those are sufficient in my mind, what you just said.
Thank you very much.
Open the roll. Close the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, so it matters before us now.
That is rather urgent in your vote count. I appreciate the urgency of everybody's interest in this issue. Let me just talk about the substance. Colleagues, Uganda is a particularly toxic climate for lesbian, gays, bisexual, and transgender people. The government has considered legislation that would sentence LGBT people to life imprisonment or execution, and violence towards our community people is rampant throughout the country as I'm reading this. Yet despite these circumstances, our government at the moment is moving ahead with sending Joseph back to that country. I urge my colleagues to support me in approving this resolution, and we will be sending this forthwith if you approve it to the mayor and to Washington to make it clear to the federal government, do not deport this gentleman back to Uganda where he surely will face either life imprisonment or death. Thank you all for listening to me. That's my motion. Do I have a second on that?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Han, for seconding the motion, and the matter is now before us. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Oh, Mr. Alarcon? Hold on, don't close the roll yet.
I just want to commend Mr. Rosendahl on his tremendous, tremendous work, and I need to introduce a motion, so I didn't want the last item to get passed real quick. Thank you.
All right, so let's close the roll on Mr. Rosendahl's item. All right, thank you. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, next item, forthwith to the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Absolutely. Next, is there any items remaining on the desk?
No items, Madam President. Counsel, or?
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Yeah. Okay.
Just get, you got to get into the quick.
Get for me?
No, it's not.
No, I know.
If we don't hit the deadline today, we can't track the money.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, of course.
While we're waiting, why don't, if we have any announcements by any of the members? Any announcements, members? Mr. Reyes?
Yep. Counsel, I just wanted to thank the Dodgers and Los Angeles Police Department, the strong presence they demonstrated in the game. I just heard from some of my constituents and folks attending, and they felt assured, they felt comfortable, and it has a lot to do with our focus as a city, making sure we bring back that venue to be a family-oriented environment. So I just want to rise and thank our police department, Charlie Beck, and the Dodgers as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Members, are there any other announcements to be made? Mr. Clerk, why don't we do?
Madam President, counsel has motions for posting and referral.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Counselmember Smith requests to arrive at 11 on June 22 due to city business. That meets council policy.
That'll be without objection.
Counselmember Zion requests to be excused on July 19 and 20 due to city business. That meets council policy.
That'll be without objection.
And Counselmember Weston requests to be excused on May 13 due to personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, that'll be without objection.
The desk is clear.
All right, members, I've already asked if there were any announcements. We have no further announcements, so if you would all please rise for adjourned motions. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, Monday morning at 8:00 AM, the first meeting of the AEG football business is going to be coming. So if you're out there hearing this, it's 8:00 AM on Monday morning will be the first meeting where parameters will be set, discussions will begin. The process will take a lot of time. Some of us are upset about 8:00 AM in terms of getting here, but that's the decision, and that's when the first meeting will be, 8:00 AM on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you for clearing that up, and that is the first meeting at 8:00 AM. That doesn't mean the schedule will ultimately be at 8:00 AM. That's something that we will discuss at committee, so thank you very much. Any adjourned motions? Ms. Han.
Thank you. Colleagues, I want us to adjourn today in the memory of John Rukavina. I guess he was known as Rookie, who passed away on April 13 after a two-year battle with myelofibrosis. He was born in 1928, and he was an 82-year resident of San Pedro. The waterfront was his home, first as a commercial fisherman and then as a 43-year member of ILWU Locals 13 and 94. John served in the Korean War and was awarded the Purple Heart. His passion was the open seas, cruising the world with his wife. He's survived by his wife of 60 years, Catherine, sons Ken and John, daughter Susan, grandchildren Adrian and Nick, brother Anthony, mother-in-law Eva Marticich, brother-in-laws Mitch Marticich and Pete Marticich and Joe Marticich, and numerous nieces and nephew. One of his nieces is my friend Andrea Hegabelli, and she was the one that asked if we would adjourn in his memory. Visitation will be held at McNerney's on Sunday, April 17, from 4 to 7, and then a funeral mass will be held at Holy Trinity Catholic Church on He's survived by his wife of 60 years, Catherine, sons Ken and John, daughter Susan, grandchildren Adrian and Nick, brother Anthony, mother-in-law Eva Marticich, brother-in-laws Mitch Marticich and Pete Marticich and Joe Marticich and numerous nieces and nephew. One of his nieces is my friend Andrea Hegabelli and she was the one that asked if we would adjourn in his memory. Visitation will be held at McNerney's on Sunday, April 17 from 4 to 7 and then a funeral mass will be held at Holy Trinity Catholic Church on Monday morning at 10:00 a.m. The family's requesting that in lieu of flowers, contributions be made to the Mary Star of the Sea Building School Building Fund. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Coretts, I believe, do you have an adjourned motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask you all join me in memory of Dr. Norman Merman. Dr. Merman, a revered educator and beloved family man, passed away on April 10 at the age of 91. Norman and his wife Beverly, who passed away a few months ago, were the founders of the world-renowned Merman School for Gifted Children, which will celebrate his 50th anniversary in 2012. Norman Merman was born in the Bronx and was the youngest of six children, raised in orthodox family, attended Yeshiva as a child, and although Judaism would continue to be an integral path of his life, he pursued a secular path of education, enrolling in the City College of New York where he met his wife in 1941. They were married at the chapel at Yale University in 1943 and when he came back from World War II after completing a number of flying missions in his military service, he first engaged in some chemistry-related activities, but later became a teacher when there was a dramatic shortage of teachers. He went on to teach elementary school in LUSD for 10 years where he noticed that gifted children often languished and not fulfilled their potential. He decided to make the advancement of gifted children the focus first of his doctoral dissertation and then he and his wife decided to found a school for gifted children. When they opened it up in 1962, they had no facilities, so they operated out of their West Los Angeles home. When there was an article on the fledgling school by L.A. Times Education Editor Dick Turpin, suddenly there were several families that became more involved and the school flourished. It has been on Mulholland Drive since 1971. It's prospered over the past 40 years and became an internationally known and significant education entity. Almost 50 years later, the school has retained its wonderful and wonderfully deserved reputation for caring education and devoted friendships. The world will sorely miss both Dr. Norman Merman and his wife Beverly, but their incredible generosity of spirit and learnedness that they promoted and shared will forever have a lasting impact and imprint on the people of Los Angeles through their wonderful school. Dr. Merman is survived by his son Alan Merman, daughter Leslie Merman-Geffen, grandchildren Zachary, Jesse, Talia and Yoni.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl.
Now, that that school that he helped create has been a tremendous asset to the community, to my district as well as Mr. Coretts' district, so it's an honor to second this motion. Thank you.
All members on that, Mr. Coretts? Okay, thank you. There is another, I'll go back to you, another adjourned motion?
Announcement.
Okay, any other adjourned motions? All right, then if we can, take a break and go back to announcements.
Thank you, colleagues. I just forgot to make an announcement of a big event's happening this weekend in San Pedro. It's the 8th Annual L.A. Harbor International Film Festival and tonight it's going to be the showing of the Joy Luck Club at 7:00 p.m. at the historic Warner Grand Theater in downtown San Pedro and this is association with The Big Read and we talked about that in city council a couple of weeks ago and actually the actress who plays Waverly was here, Tamlin. So, tonight, if you want to go see that movie, then tomorrow night at 7.
Tamlin Tomita.
Tamlin Tomita, who was here in council and she will also be, yes, and she will be appearing tonight in San Pedro as well. Then tomorrow night, the Hollywood nostalgia tribute, we're showing April Love and Pat Boone is actually coming down to San Pedro and speaking to the audience and if you haven't seen that movie in a long time, that would be a great. And then, of course, Sunday is our Doc Sunday. We're going to be showing The Tillman Story at 3:00. Thank you, Tom, and I think you're coming down for one of those. So, if you don't have anything to do this weekend, come on down to San Pedro, the historic Warner Grand Theater for the International Film Festival. It's a great time.
You covered now? Okay, everybody's got everything? All right, so, Mr. Clerk, let's call the roll. All right, we're adjourned.